Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners for June 14th to order. Join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for being here this morning. Next on our agenda is public comments. What we do is we ask that you come to the podium, identify yourself, your name and your address, and we try to limit the comments to about five minutes. So anybody would like to address the county board this morning? Welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. I get a little nervous, I wrote everything down, but my name is Joyce Stewie and I thank you for allowing us to speak this morning. There is true evidence of massive voter fraud in the 2020 election. Mike Lindell has had three documentaries on FrankSpeech.com of evidence derived from forensic experts. Dinesh D'Souza released the documentary 2000 Mules in May, revealing the massive ballot harvesting that took place with geo-tracking evidence. Lara Logan from Fox will be releasing a documentary of the woman who brought forward the evidence in Maricopa County, Colorado. Recently, I requested six items from Kendra Olson relating to the 2020 election here in Carver County. I received one of the six items. Then was to ask David Frishman and then Bebe Black, I believe is her name. If there is nothing wrong and if there is nothing to hide, then why am I not receiving this public information? It is past the 10 days for Bebe Black to respond, so now what? Fifty-one point eight percent of the ballots of the 2020 election in Carver County were absentee or mail-in. Fifty-one point eight percent. That is shocking. And who counts the absentee mail-in ballots? The ballot board. And who makes up the ballot board? Its in-house employees. According to the Supreme Court ruling, ballot boards counting the ballots of absentee and mail-in voting are to be made up of election judges of an equal balance of Democrats and The commissioners you hear today on the board are responsible for how the elections in Carver County are run. I was never aware of that until recently, that the five of you can actually control how the elections are run in Carver County. Revolutions and changes are in the power of your hands to make things on the up and up in Carver County elections, and I sincerely ask that the commissioners on the board today hear what Rick Weibel and Doane Barber have found in their proposed and their proposed resolutions. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Just for informational purposes, this topic was brought before us and we set up a work session scheduled for July 19th after our regular board meeting. Our regular board meeting will start at nine o'clock like we did this morning, and right after that, we're going to have an open work session for anybody on this election integrity question.
Okay, including Rick Weibel?
Yes, if he wants to show up, exactly.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Good morning, commissioners. I've had the pleasure of meeting my Chair Degler and Mr. Workman, the others, Mr. Udoman, Mr. Lynch, and Mr. Fahy, I have not had the pleasure of meeting. I'm Jennifer Ray, live in Chanhassen, and as you all know, I have been asking questions about elections. Got in a little bit late in the game. For decades, I was an independent slash libertarian, and now I identify as a Republican. I wanted to first make three points, and the first point I have is thank you for acknowledging a date. For some reason, that's been quite a Herculean task to get that on the calendar. Rick Weibel, as you may and probably do know, is an absolute genius when it comes to technology. He is also an election expert, and to utilize his services free of charge to ensure that our elections are free and fair would be a good use of our dollars since they don't cost any. Doane Barber is also a wonderful person who also lives in Carver County and is extremely knowledgeable as to our procedures and processes. So I'm glad that we've got a date because that was one of my questions, and I hope that they can attend because originally they were going to be facilitated and worked into an actual meeting. There are fixes to many of the issues, and they're as simple as turning certain functions on with the machines, like flip the switch so that you can in fact have a receipt for how you voted, who you voted for, flip the switch so that we know and can get certain reports. In the several people that I know who had presented requests for Freedom of Information Act information, I don't believe everyone has been responded to, number one. The one receipt that I have seen was pretty easy to get to, and all of the other reports, you should have been able to basically push a button to get them, and we were told we didn't even turn those features on on the machines to generate that information. To me, that's unacceptable. The fact that it was brought to my attention that this is going to be very expensive and take hours and hours of labor tells us that we have a problem with our procedures and that we're sloppy, and we need to clean that up because all of these should be really easy to obtain, there should be files that are kept, and Doane and Rick have the answers to those. To get to the resolutions of those, each of you five commissioners have the authority, ability, and responsibility to pass resolutions so we have free and fair elections here. Ballot board, as Ms. Stewie mentioned, the Minnesota Supreme Court that you are all aware of, two months ago acknowledged that the ballot boards, absentee and whatnot, have to be party parity and election judges used. We have no intentions on doing that, we aren't doing that. Why is that? We need resolutions. Why are you not getting those resolutions done? Point two, machines. Is anyone here, you can just raise a hand, doesn't have to be a big, long answer, is anyone of you aware of public machine testing for six weeks that we've had? Mr. Frishman, when was the six weeks of public machine testing?
I mean, last, then to a, to that.
No, for this coming election.
At this point, Jennifer, I think we'll present to the board, and you can ask Mr. Frishman off time. I don't want to use up your time, you know.
All right, I'm happy to, I would love to get to know you and meet you and chat with you. As of right now, since we haven't done that, we cannot use machines for our primary. We have to hand count ballots. That's the law. We'll get into the details with you on that later. So we've got the testing, and then the last item that I have is just with the drop boxes, the question, and I will point this to you all in an email so you can respond, phone call for Mr. Degler. Why are we using drop boxes? What problem are you solving? Because there isn't a problem that it solves. It's much easier for any person who lives in Carver County to go to their own mailbox, to go to any post office box and drop it in. But what it does present is a lot of logistics issues, surveillance cameras, who's going to be watching the surveillance cameras? It creates a whole lot of issues. Steel County, just this last week, even though they were previously going to use drop boxes, thought that the headaches were going to be so immense and crazy that they decided, we're not using them. So I hope that you adopt that as well because it is within your purview to do so in resolutions. Last but not least, I have a gift bag for each of you.
I'm looking over at our county attorney, are we, can we accept these?
Ma'am, we cannot. Jennifer, look at our county attorney.
Yeah, unfortunately, under laws, I mean, elected officials can't receive gifts, there's certain exceptions in the statutes. I don't know what it is, but, well, it depends. I mean, what is it?
It's popcorn, some Snickers bars, and a movie.
Yeah, they're not going to be able to accept a gift. I mean, elected officials aren't under the statute, so.
Is it 2,000 mules?
Yes, it is.
Can I buy it from you? I've been looking for it, that was going to be my question. I missed it in the movie theater, and I would like to purchase one. I'll purchase it from you later, and I'll give you cash for it.
I, if you pay anything for it, so I don't need to. If you want to purchase it for a dollar, at least 21 purchases.
I don't, we have to, whatever it is, I have to ask the county attorney if I can or not.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and board members, I mean, the statute's really clear that elected officials, under certain exceptions, can't accept gifts. They have to pay whatever the cost is, so it can't be some reduced amount, and they don't make up the laws, and so I'm sure they appreciate that, but it's pretty clear that they're not going to be able to accept a gift. You want to give it to them, I suppose they could donate it to, or, you know, they can give it to, they'll probably just donate it, but my suggestion is, it's a nice gesture, but I wouldn't accept the gift.
Could you leave them over with our administrator?
I said we can, and.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would prefer she keeps them and gives them to somebody else if, and it is a nice gesture, but it does pose a problem for us if we, you know, I don't know what I would do with them. I would give them away anyway, so, but thank you anyway.
Well, thank you.
This is the first I've heard about that, I mean, we've known that there has the statute in place, that's why I looked over to county attorney right off the bat.
We can't have free popcorn or anything like that, it's unfair.
As much as I like popcorn, I mean, you know.
I know, you love popcorn.
So thank you very much, Jennifer.
Well, you are welcome. I think that's a tad bit ridiculous since this is like a $5 gift, but, and something that you should all see, and I am happy to sell you one for whatever you, honestly, they didn't cost me more than $5.
Where do they sell them? Retail? I've been looking for them, but I have not been able to find them.
You have to buy them online.
Okay.
So there you have it. Sorry you couldn't take my gift bags. Thank you very much for your time. Look forward to the July 19th meeting.
Thank you very much. Any other people that'd like to address the county board at this point? Please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Paul Stout. I am in Chanhassen, Commissioner District One, Gales District. Thank you for having us, opening this up for us to speak. I was not prepared that we could do this today. However, this, I've been following the same election integrity issue for, since last year, since December, and just to, just to give you a little brief overview of what I understand that Rick Weibel has come up with, I mean, he's been saying that the number of registered voters to match up with the number of votes, actual votes, those things were like separate until after the election, and you're given so many days to match those up and submit that to the state. His point was that the election was certified before those numbers were even matched up, which to his point was, you know, how can that be? I'm thinking, okay, I'm going to give these people the benefit of the doubt, COVID, whatever, you know, as long as it matches up in the end, what's the big deal? Well, his point is, there really is no, there's no way to tie the actual voter to the vote, and there's a, that leaves a lot of time for possible shenanigans, not necessarily on purpose, but possibly, you know, that we're simply matching names of registered voters to the number of votes. So that's, that's one issue. Secondly, back in December after the election, and when I started to become aware of this and ballot boards and all this kind of thing, I did request of Kendra Olson many times. I mean, I had met her, talked to her, asking for information about who is on the ballot boards, how is this, if there's any issue adjudicated, and many of these were phone calls, and I never got a response at all. Finally, when I talked to somebody, I was, I was able to get to somebody, and they told me Kendra is super busy, that she has this statutory thing that she must get in, you know, these number of votes to the state, blah, blah, blah. I think that's what they're talking about, the registered voters not matching the votes. So I finally did put in, I finally looked on the website, I found a form, submission of information form, and submitted that, and, that was the last of it, and that was the last I heard, I didn't hear from anybody ever. So again, the ballot boards, my understanding is that the Secretary of State issues guidance to all the election officials in the state of what the statutes say, so that everybody in the, you know, every elected official does not have to have the statutes in front of them and interpret it. He has very loosely, and if not fraudulently, is not following the law in his guidance. So all our elected officials, including Kendra Olson, I was in Scott County, I talked to them, the same thing is, you know, I asked, I said, hey, does, do you have to have party balance, as you do on Election Day, of election judges for the ballot boards? And she said, no. Both of them said, no, that's not in the guidance, not required. What was said here was the Supreme Court, this, this was brought before the state Supreme Court, and they, they made a definitive ruling that yes, you must have party balance on the ballot boards. So, you know, the point is, to me, that again, I feel like simply trusted the process of the elections for so many years, you know, that people are, you know, doing their best, and I don't have any reason to believe otherwise of Kendra or anything. It's just that once there starts to be questions of the legitimacy of the election, you start to look at what the law is, and it's shocking to me that it seems like we are not following the law. And again, it's not necessarily our, Kendra's fault, it's whoever is giving them guidance based on what the law is supposed to be. So I, I just, I really am glad to hear about your, you know, meeting the 19th, talk about this, educate people, what, you know, what's really going on. And to me, the onus is on us, whoever is running the election, to make sure that nobody has questions about what's going on. And, and I just feel like, you know, when people say there's fraud in the election, oh, prove it, prove it. No. If there's any question of problems, it should be 100% addressed, whether or not there really is fraud or not. Okay, tell me how you're going to prevent this, how are you going to prevent this? It should be as airtight as anything. To me, your ballot is as important as a piece of money, as cash, a check, or whatever. I mean, if we can't secure our elections in that way, then there's no point in campaigning, changing hearts and minds, whatever. There's no point if, if we can't trust what has been, you know, what happened at the, at the election, so. Thank you, and that's all I'll have to say.
Well, thank you, Paul. For somebody that said that you weren't prepared, you did an excellent job expressing yourself. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Judy Staffel, I live in Chanhassen. I also didn't prepare anything, Paul, so I pretty much echo what has been said so far. I was an election judge in the 2020 election in Chanhassen, and, you know, went to eight hours of training, and the day of, it appeared that we had four Democrats working at my precinct, we had four Republicans working, everything seemed perfect. You know, once we put everything in the poll pad, we really don't know what happens to it, but I had to have faith that, you know, the computer process would work good. But then after the election, when I found out that half of the ballots were absentee and we never saw them, I'm like, well, who did see them? And I kind of started looking and approached my contact in Chanhassen and said, well, I would actually like to be an election judge this year for the absentee ballots, since half of them were voted that way, and, and she said, well, we really don't need any help from that, we do that all in-house. And I think if we're so serious about the day of election, I feel like every vote that comes in, we should treat with that same amount of, you know, responsibility. And then I also tried, you know, what is the law in Minnesota? Our voting laws seem really liberal compared to some other states that have voter ID, things like that, and I tried, you know, the Greg Bo House Representative level, and every time I approached someone, it was, well, we don't have control of Secretary of State Simon, and we don't have control of both the House and the Senate and the governor, so there's really nothing we can do. Until we get majority, we can't change any of these laws because the, the party in control doesn't want to. And so that's really why I'm here, is I do feel that as commissioners, there are some things that we can do to have transparency and within the law that was passed that we can do to make everyone feel that their vote counted and there isn't any fraud. And I'm not saying there was, I'm saying let's just make sure that we all know everything's on the up and up. So I appreciate the July 19th meeting as well. I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Some people say that politics art isn't exciting. You come to a precinct caucus, as you can tell, a lot of these people just happen to be in my precinct, and we have a very exciting precinct, so I want to thank them for coming. Anybody, anybody else would like to address the board, please?
My name is Mary Cypherson, I'm living in Carver County. Just a point of clarification, you said the meeting is the 19th of July, that's a Sunday.
Did we, did I get it wrong?
Oh, you're looking at maybe June, July.
July 19th.
July 19th. Now, you do know the primary is the second, so then.
I got a Tuesday.
You are going to not be able to, to change things for that primary in August, correct? So they, like, like she said, Jen said that the ballots will be counted by hand.
That's a question that I can't answer. Anybody else wish to address the board, please?
Good morning. My name is Gretchen Levin, I live in Waconia, and basically what's been said is a lot of things that I share concerns with, and I just wanted to say that I too am concerned about the election integrity, and I just was looking up the word integrity, and from the American Heritage Dictionary of the English Language, it just said, integrity, the steadfast adherence to a strict moral or ethical code, the quality or condition of being whole or undivided completeness, unimpaired condition, soundness of state, freedom from corruption or impurity, unimpaired morality, soundness of moral principle and character, entire uprightness or fidelity, the state or quality of being entire or complete, wholeness, entierness, unbroken state, moral soundness, honesty, freedom from corrupting influence or motive, specially used with reference to the fulfillment of contracts. to the fulfillment of contracts, the discharge, the discharge of agencies, trusts and the like, upniss, rectitude. Um, it is important to me, and I believe to everyone who votes with integrity, that elections be true and fair, and that the voice of the people be heard. Voters need to trust that they are not being deceived, that their votes count, that their vote is recorded and tabulated accurately, and that voter rolls are accurate. I understand that in the 2020 election, there were discrepancies in these areas, and I feel that they need to be looked into for the sake of election integrity. I did hear a short presentation by Don Baber last Wednesday night, having to do with concerns regarding the 2020 election here in Carver County, and I would like to see these concerns addressed. And again, I understand that you're setting up this meeting, so I appreciate that. So just want to thank you for your time and um looking into this in advance.
Well, thank you for your comments. Other, anybody else would wish to address the board?
Again, I, I did not prepare anything, but my name's Deb Parish, and I just want to say, you don't know what you don't know. When you don't look for problems, you can't be aware of problems that exist. And in the very first lawsuit that was filed right after the election in 2020, for, in 2019 in November, uh in the Michigan case, Minnesota information was co-mingled with Michigan information, and that's why that case was thrown out right away. But if you look, there's documentation that eh not, within Minnesota, I'm not specific to Carver County, but when you have documentation that 141% of registered voters voted, and 139% of registered voters voted, and it's repeated count precinct after precinct, it creates an uh, an apprehension on the part of the voters, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the county board at this point? Yeah, please.
Can I loan these to you?
I'm looking over at our county attorney.
So Mr. Chairman, board members, so the statute's pretty clear, I mean, obviously this, they don't enact the laws, there are certain exceptions, little trinkets, if it's for a mon- non-monetary services, that, but otherwise, there's really limitations on gifts that public officials can accept, and there-
Isn't a gift if I loan it to them, can they return it?
But Mr. Chairman, there's certain, certainly an appearance that, you know, the commissioners have to make a decision too, that if somebody comes in, imagine if other, other-
And they're gonna loan them a movie and they return it? I'll pick it up here at the courthouse, so other ones can take it out.
Are you loaning the, the gifts of the food?
Um, that they can give to you, they can give to the employees, they can do the popcorn-
No, but, no, respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I, I just don't think it's a good idea, it doesn't appear very well either, because if speakers came in and they had a gift for the commissioners, even though it's well-intended, it's a nice gesture, it's just different than elected officials.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Commissioner Urderman.
There might be a mechanism to, if, if somebody wants to see that movie um through the library, you can make a request that they have that, that be available if public wants to see it, and it's a very simple form, I can get you that link. And that might be a fair mechanism for anybody in the room and beyond if they want to view that, that movie at no cost, without having to have the impediments that Attorney Metz is talking about. So I'd be happy to send you the link.
Yep, you bet.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a good suggestion, because um the movie, I think we could check out from the library and easily see, the popcorn I would not return. Any other uh comments that people would like to address the board? Thank you very much for these comments, uh we'll move on with our agenda, item number two, the agenda review and adoption.
Mr. Chair, if I could, on the 19th, we plan to have this in a work session, if you can be here, be here, if there, you can't be here, you could submit uh-
Oh.
Any uh, anything, you can do it online, send us an email, or you could uh give it to one of us, we could have it, and to get all of your uh answers, all your questions answered, because of, I agree with you, if there's, if we hit, can't have election integrity, we don't have, really have anything, so we agree with you wholeheartedly. So, I just want to know-
Yep, no, very good, very good comments. I think everybody on this board obviously values the elections and the integrity of them. Moving on, item number two, the elect uh, agenda review and adoption. Oh, moved.
Second, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Workman, second by Commissioner Lynch, to approve the agenda as presented, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item number three, the approval of the minutes from May 24th, special session.
Move to approve as presented.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Workman, to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Commissioner Urderman.
I think there's one piece in here, it might just be type graphical, but the special session is the header on the upper right of the first page, and then it says a regular session, the Carver Board was held, I think that should just simply say special session.
Oh, noted.
And then uh I think Administrator Hemsley made note of it, because it was a special session, I had something else planned, that's why I was absent that day.
Again, well noted. Any, any other discussion? Uh with that um clarification, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Community announcements, Commissioner Fahy.
Mr. Chair, thank you, have the opportunity to go out to breakfast on the farm, the Holquist Farms out in San Francisco Township on Saturday, just a great event, there was a thousand-plus people there, and to get a tour of a working farm and, and to see, unfortunately, the declining number of dairy farms in Carver County, but this was a huge operation and-
Is breakfast any different on the farm as uh normally home?
It tastes a lot better. And then also, the amateur baseball season is in full swing, so if you have the opportunity to go and view some of the local amateur baseball teams, it's a great way to spend an evening or a Sunday afternoon with your family. And then also, just congratulations to all the graduates in the multiple school districts within Carver County, and just congratulations to all of the young aspar- aspiring individuals. So, thank you.
Not that I want to rub it in, but I just happened to be at the game uh the other Sunday night, Young America traveled down to Chaska, and they went home with their first loss, so, I'm not saying who won the game, but-
Yeah.
Other community announcements, Commissioner Lynch.
First loss is not bad, though.
Exactly.
And while we're on Town Ball, I just wanted to say that Channel 9 actually came out to Watertown for the Town Ball tour, so they were there all day long, and they had breakfast at uh R&amp;B's and did interviews the whole day, and then uh I was watching Kelsey Carlson at uh, when they broadcast the game, and she actually said the hospitality in uh Carver County in Watertown was a 10 out of 10, and they were just absolutely overjoyed with it, so.
And I believe everything Kelsey says, because she lives in my district.
There you go.
Commissioner Urderman.
Mr. Chair, I had to echo what Commissioner Fahy said about the Holquist Farm, my daughter and I had a chance to go out there, we narrowly avoided having to bring a bunny home.
Ooh.
She said that was the best part of the day, 45 extra minutes that we didn't anticipate of her spending time with that, so we've been dealing with um, we think there might be a Christmas request for a bunny this year. Also, a town-
There's no such thing as one bunny.
Oh geez, maybe we'll come to see yours. Uh, so Town Ball, I'll echo as well, it's, it's a gem within our community, that sometimes if you're outside of here, you don't know what it is, or don't appreciate it, sometimes we take it for granted. In that vein, um Bob Popitz was recognized last night in the city of Victoria as a community pillar, with that comes a money stipend to accelerate something that their family wants to, to do, and I think they're gonna use those dollars towards enhancing that field. There might be um, there's a, there's thought, there's thoughts and talk of having an underground bedding cage for youth to use year-round, um so you probably see more of that coming up, but uh Bob and his family have taken care of that field for 50-plus years at no cost to the community, so I wanted to call that out. Um Chan Sports, I know it's a little bit outside my district, but it's near and dear to me, our nephew is a senior plan for Chan today at CHS Stadium, I think it's the first time unofficially, um they're doing research to find out officially, I don't want to rain on your praise, your district.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, but I think it's the first time in state history that all 10 summer sport, uh spring sports uh advanced to state. And so I think that's cool, and it's a win for our community, um that's on the heels of the robotics team being semifinalists down in Texas, there's so many things to elevate and celebrate in, in those regards, so uh the Chan baseball team will be playing at CHS Field today at 7:30. And then um last week, uh a number of us had a chance to honor farmers, and there's a little placard that I, I like to show and share, I don't know if it's on cam or not, but the placard says, a roadway dedicated to farmers and their families, Carver County's original caretakers, and I think there's about a 20-mile stretch of Highway 10 that crosses four commissioner districts, over 500 parcels of current farmland, um and we were able to honor those farmers. And farming in our community even predates the founding, official founding of Carver County in 1855. It goes way, 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 way back, and as I see particularly in Victorian city of Carver, a lot of that land getting gobbled up by houses and development, um to remember the, the original roots and the people that, that established this community, I think it was a nice honor to be had there and put those signs up. Um, we know you're a farmer, you're a resident farmer, the one we lean on too, I know other people own farmland that are on the board, uh but it was a good opportunity to acknowledge and recognize um people that we may not have ever met, so just wanted to say that, thank you.
All set. Commissioner Workman?
Well, uh Mr. Chairman, um I guess that's my district that that uh, there's no dedication, so um somewhere in there, the Klingel Huttses, Daglars, Kerbers, all sorts of farmers, uh maybe underrepresented by that, uh but we'll get over that. Um, celebrated this weekend, instead of breakfast on the farm, we had breakfast on the lake celebrating Mrs. Workman's retirement. So congratulations uh to Carolyn Workman, uh who I don't mention often here, um at least I do respectfully, but um, you know, what does this mean for me, is the question?
Of course.
Um, great, uh you, you don't have anything to do, I'm not retired, so um we're looking forward to uh, as an educator, she would normally have the summer off anyway, which was a, a good benefit of the, of the career, but uh I'm telling you, middle to end of August, we are going to really feel uh the fun, I think, so uh we'll stay a little longer on Madeline Island, or, and we're gonna go to some away gopher football games and have a little fun, so.
We congratulate her, that's for sure. Um, I'd just like to mention roadwork, it's that time of the year that you see road construction all through the county, um whether it be resurfacing, I want to mention in between 17 and 101 Pioneer, that's gonna be resurfaced this next week, there's some finishing up jobs on the landscaping on 101 up the hill, so any kind of roadwork all through the county, uh expect delays once in a while, uh give them a lot of room, give them a lot of time, um it's gonna be really nice when it's done. And the last thing I might like to mention, this time of year, we think of gardening, and our master gardeners are out in force, and tonight is one of the nights that they're showing off some gardens, I know it's in Scott County at the fairgrounds, but they will be coming back to Carver County uh during the summer, but um contact your local master gardener, and um obviously, they are gems in our county, um gardening is a big thing. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda, uh this morning, we have a number of items on the consent agenda, I'll just list a few of them. Uh, the first one is to change the FTE on the HHS Child and Family Department, we're making an amendment to the utility easement, easement with the city of Waconia for Lake Waconia Regional Park, um we'll have a service agreement for Highways 10 and the 24 projects, we have a resolution for Highway 40 project in the Val Plan area, uh community living infrastructure grant for 22 through 24, we have an approval for, of a contract for cyber se- cybersecurity monitoring, we have a number of tobacco licenses renewals, we're changing the FTEs for the community service officers, we have requests to approve the contract for the Minnesota Elevator Company, a contract for master space plans, approve uh of the city of Watertown Local Water Management Plan, we have a Bongard's RSD Farm Related Business, we have approval of a contract for mint roofing, donation to the sheriff's dive team, a citizen's donation to the sheriff's chaplain, uh the state performance measurement program, and finally, the Health and Human Services and Commissioner warrants. Is there anything that should be pulled that we should talk about separate? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole package? So moved, Urderman.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Urderman, second by Commissioner Lynch, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Item number six, under the heading of Finance, to award the sale of Steiner-Keltlinger Capital Improvement Bonds. Mr. Dave Freshman's gonna kick it off, but maybe not. Who needs Dave when we have Nick? Nick, welcome, from Ellers and Associates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates, and I'll step in for Mr. Freshman. Um, the screen is locked here, but there is a set of slides, if, if I can-
We can help you out with that.
Sorry. We're here to talk about the award of a sale of bonds, uh the county is going to issue for the uh Steiner-Kelting facility, it's a mental health facility here in the community that the county invested about 2.5 million to help acquire the site and construct, and the bond issued today is to reimburse those funds so that you can make them available for other types of capital needs, and then pass through the debt service costs to the tenant of the facility.
We should have left that up there, that other slide up there a little longer to advertise.
And so there is a lease, a long-term lease agreement that the county has entered into with People's Inc., they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit operator of the facility to provide services, and they will uh be making monthly payments uh tied to the debt service of this bond issue. So there is no out-of-pocket funds from the county anticipated. This process began back in May 3rd, there was a public hearing held in this room uh to preliminarily authorize the issuance of bonds for the facility. After that hearing was closed, there was a 30-day petition period uh that closed on June 2nd, uh where the public could step forward to demand that the bonding authority be placed on a referendum, uh no petition was received, and so at that point in time, the authority to issue debt reverts to the, the county board, and that's why we're here at this point in time. I'll also congratulate you all, the AAA credit rating of the county was affirmed in this process, so we did have a discussion uh with Director Freshman, uh Mary Kay Wall, and about, with S&amp;P to discuss the financial health of the county, and S&amp;P uh provided a report and affirmed the AAA rating, which is the highest rating that they offer, and quite frankly, that report is, is glowing, um it really does put, shine a bright light on the county, and says your financial health is, is pristine uh at the top. In addition, offering documents were released, and we opened bids on your behalf yesterday afternoon on the proposals for the bonds. And today, we're here for final approval with a resolution that was included in your packet, as well as an updated version with the results of the sale, uh for the board's action to move forward and, and lock in this financing. With Sarah Empor's reports, uh again, glowing, uh very strong economic metrics, uh property values, uh wealth indicators in the local community, employment, all very strong, and they report even stays favorable to other AAA peers, so other top entities in the, in across the country. A very strong financial profile, which means you've got a history of, of maintaining positive operating results, so revenues are meeting your expenditures for the services you provide, and you maintain a healthy level of reserves to weather a rainy day or, or some type of temporary uh financial strain. And that all, again, shines a very bright light on your financial operations here in the county. And also a low debt and contingent liability profile, uh again, relative to AAA peers, very low liabilities of the county, uh provides a lot of flexibility in the future for future capital needs, if you do need them. Yesterday, we received two bids on the county's behalf, the winning bid came from Northland Securities at a 3.92 true interest cost, uh the cover bid from Baird- bid from Baird at just over 4%. These are bonds that'll be repaid over a 24-year term. Um, these rates are, are high and they are reflective of, of what we've seen in the, in the marketplace over the last couple, well, really all year, as rates are coming back up towards historical norms, uh, from the pandemic. Northland Securities provided their bid in association with two other underwriters, DA Davidson and United Bankers Bank. So all three of them are pooling together to purchase the bonds and reoffer them in the public markets for, to investors. With the final sizing from Northland Securities, uh, the bonding amount will be 2.53 million. That reflects a $25,000 bid premium they included within the purchase price of those bonds. Um, and it reflects a 166,800 annual debt service costs that will be, again, passed through in the lease agreement with, with People's Inc.
Nick, before you change the slide, a couple of questions on that. Um, what's the 25,000 bid premium? I've been to many auctions, so I know what an auction premium is. What does this premium mean?
If you notice in the, in the price column under Northland Securities, it says a price of 2.57 million, uh, but the final principal amount that we'll be able to offer these bonds for is 2.53. And there's a differential in there, which reflects the, both their premium and the origination fee that they're taking. And so it means they're paying higher than face value upfront right now to the county. And we're able to use that premium to lower the amount of borrowing that you have outstanding. You could keep that premium as additional proceeds, um, and repay it over time through the interest rates that you're charged, but, um, in this instance, we don't have a need for more than the amount that we're borrowing to reimburse. And so instead of keeping that premium, we'll just use it to downsize the, the amount of the issue and lower your debt service costs.
I just wanted the public to know that. And then, um, the 166,800 average debt, is this what People's Inc. expected? Or were they surprised at this? And are they, um, capable of making that premium?
You know, certainly we had hoped, uh, for a little bit better conditions, you know, as we've kind of watched rates tick up. And unfortunately, I think we expect that they'll continue to tick up, at least through the balance of the year. We had shown projections of $170,000, just as a conservative side of the, the framework, but we had some hopes that it would be a little bit lower. The slide I have, uh, before you right now is a 10-year history, kind of of where, uh, an index of municipal bonds have priced over time. And as you can see, uh, this year, uh, we've, we've crept back up towards the norm. The, the orange bar in the center of the, of the table is the average over that 10-year period, which is admittedly also a fairly low interest rate period in, in the grand scheme of things. But you can see that, that rates are on the rise on the march this year. Uh, we do expect that they will creep a little bit higher and certainly the Fed is gonna take some action soon. Um, that, I think the market consensus is that they're gonna increase rates quite dramatically to try to curb inflation. Um, so we did have, we did share that information with People's Inc. They're happy to lock in now, rather than try to wait later, uh, when we, we think it might be worse.
Well, thank you. Any other questions at this point? I didn't mean to interrupt, but before you moved on, thank you.
So, uh, final slide is just, uh, for the county board's consideration, there is a resolution, uh, an updated resolution provided from your bond attorney, uh, awarding the sale of 2.53 million in general obligation capital improvement bonds, Series 2022A, fixing the form and specifications thereof, providing for their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment, that is before the board, to go ahead and accept the winning proposal from Northland Securities at their pricing and rates that we've just discussed, lock in the final payment structure, and then establish a closing date of July 7th, when funds will be wired into the county's account to, uh, reimburse those costs that you invested into that facility. Happy to stand for any additional questions, but we certainly recommend moving forward. Uh, and People's Inc., uh, also would like to move forward and lock in their payments so they can begin making those lease payments to you.
One final question before I turn it over to the board for their questions. Uh, were you surprised only two bids?
I was hoping for more, but I, I wouldn't say I was surprised, given the relative size of, you know, it's 2.5 million, the 2022A, 4-year term. In the municipal market, that's actually a pretty small bond offering. Certainly, we don't want to borrow more and, and, and make it larger, but, um, we did expect some limited, uh, participation. It seems that Northland and Baird are, are continuing to bid. Uh, they are local here in Minnesota and Wisconsin, so they're very familiar with the local landscape of our municipalities. And, uh, they've been aggressive in, in bidding, but, uh, we didn't really attract maybe some of the larger underwriting firms from the east coast or, or down south.
Thank you, Nick. Yeah, other questions for Nick at this point? Commissioner Lynch?
No questions. I'm just actually here, um, I'd love to hear his comments that we're one of the favorable even among the AAA's. And it's wonderful. And he also mentioned that the interest rates are ticking up, but I think everyone wants to lock in because I think there's uncertainty that he actually commented on and that the rates are gonna go up substantially. So I think it's a great idea to lock in now.
Other comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, just a clarification on the resolution is for 2.58 in our packet, Nick. And so you want us to approve the resolution for 2.53?
That is correct. The resolution provided in the packet was before we received the bids and, and does not reflect the premium that was provided. So the, the final amount should be 2.53 million.
Seeing that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to adopt a resolution authorizing and awarding the sale of 2,530,000 of GO revenue bonds, Series 2022A, to the lowest bidder.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fahy, seconded by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Udoman.
I just think it's helpful to add the context that we did last time you were in the boardroom of, this isn't really our desire. We just, this is the only mechanism to recoup the investment that we made into it on behalf of the taxpayers to allow People Inc. to, to make those payments. Um, I guess I did have two questions. We may look like a genius in the future locking in today, but on the other side, if this thing goes down, what's our cost to refi and is there a mechanism to do so if those rates go the other way?
Nick?
Certainly. So the bonds were offered with a call date, so the county would have an option to either prepay, so you could pay the balance off, or refinance without any kind of penalty. Uh, but that won't take effect for eight years.
Eight years.
So we are locked in for an eight-year period. Um, the reason we, we set that is that it would cost us a little bit more within the bids if we tried to have a more flexible prepayment at shorter terms. So we tried to make it where it wouldn't cost us in terms of the interest rates underwriters would provide. Um, but the county will certainly have that opportunity in the future.
And there is some partial risk if People Inc. happened to default or walk away, that we would be on the hook for these dollars, that they wouldn't be repaying, but the intention would be is if there was another tenant, if you will, they would assume the associated debt.
That's our liability, Nick.
That's correct. So you do have a, a long-term lease agreement in place. Um, this is a, a lease purchase off, option for them. The county owns the facility, so it is your facility. You control it. Um, you would be able to lease it to another provider if they were to default or walk away. Uh, but they do have skin in the game, so they will be building up equity, if you will, as they make these payments. Um, and then certainly, if you weren't able to find a tenant or you didn't need the services anymore, you could sell the property.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
It would be only our hope that we didn't need the facility anymore.
Yeah.
Obviously. Uh, motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
With that, is there a motion to go into closed session to, uh, at this point, go into closed session to discuss confidential appraisal data and an initial written offer for the purchase of a PID property 25.0080200 pursuant to Minnesota's statute, section 13D, point 05, subsection 3C?
No move, Udoman.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Udoman, seconded by Commissioner Lynch, to go into closed session. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if, if the chairman could be a little more specific, and just so the audience knows that, um, there's more details about going in the closed session in the board packet, but this is part of the process. And so maybe you want to just indicate that, Mr. Chairman, about, um, just the general location of this?
General location would be off of Highway 5 on the north side of the road. Uh, it's, um, a property that we feel we will need in the future for the Arboretum Highway 5 project, uh, in between Highway 41 and Minnewash, the Parkway.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. With, uh, all in favor of the motion to go into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. So we have to clear the room for closed session. Clear the room. We're gonna take about a three-minute break. Two-minute county board break. May I?
Okay. Bring up the motion.
Looks like a good spot to park my boat.
Okay.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Have to swim across the lake to get to it.
We're going camping.
That was probably one of the funniest things Workman's said in a while. I think I'm related.
I remember that.
It's like the process is key, so once you start the eminent domain, then you can triple the offer.
Yeah.
For that, it sounds like you gotta stay within that appraisal.
With these funds.
Yeah, with these funds. And, I mean, you're right, you don't want to come back and forth, back and forth, but you gotta follow the structure.
Yeah, if it's not an option, it's not an option.
An option. Between when the guy left.
I kinda like that.
Maybe do all the real funding.
Anybody, anybody, anybody.
Can't give anymore.
And any, any sort of negotiation or his appraisal, that has to go back to my counsel and MnDOT again.
Okay, so Pat was really saying, probably meaning that it can't be approved.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Getting up to your lake cabin at all? It all rented out?
All rented out, but we were up there a couple days. My wife's going up there today. I'm going to Oregon on Thursday for a mountain biking trip. Four buddies from law school, we do this every year, we go to some place, so we're just gonna go to bat this year. But yeah, it's a lot of work, so we got it ready, but the guy that was supposed to get our docs, kept saying, "I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna be there for two straight weeks." Maybe get somebody else.
Of the Arboretum Area Transportation Plan that was adopted in March of 2021, this property was identified as a future full acquisition. So this action now is contingent upon a willing seller and the ability to obtain the revolving loan funding for a fair market value acquisition. And so now that brings us to our requested action, which is a motion to adopt a resolution to make an initial offer to the impacted property owner related to the Highway Five project. That would be over Lake Minnewash from Rolling Acres Road to Highway 41, referring to the project there, based on the appraisal completed by a certified appraiser.
Any questions for Angie?
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I am. Commissioner Workman.
Um, did Angie just sort of state the motion?
She read it verbatim. Yep, it's what's on the.
Well, good, then I'm gonna move approval of that, and then I'm gonna further, I know that the, I speak for the rest of the board, that we're not a real high on eminent domain, those are not fun words for anybody. And this is gonna be the start of a long process, but what would be, if Angie, you could get back to maybe the board about what would be the estimated on and off ramp to service this parcel once a new land bridge is built by MnDOT down the road, just so we know?
Yes, Commissioner, we actually did look into that, and the, to build and access would be at least $2 million plus maintenance costs over time. MnDOT thinks that's on the low side, so could be well north of that.
Is that what you call a personal driveway? Wow. With that, Commissioner Workman, are you making this motion?
Correct.
We have a motion by Commissioner Workman, is there a second?
I would second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. The motion is what's on the board. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Angie, appreciate it. Moving on to 9.1, request for approval of a contract with His House Foundation. This is under the heading of Communities, and we'll have Mr. Richard, Dr. Richard Scott here. Dr. Scott.
Thank you, Commissioner and Chair, and I'll just pull up my, there we go, very good. But Board Chair and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to present on this contract. Normally, these are provided often in the consent agenda, so I was delighted when I had an opportunity to speak about this a little bit more in person. And I'll just briefly talk a little bit about what we intend to use or partner with His House Foundation, spend a few slides just talking a little bit about their background, the kind of work that they currently do, and then look what we hope to accomplish, and sort of our accountability measures that we put in place when we do make contracts with community partners on that. So again, as you may know, our plan, and also what's in your packet, is that Cover County Public Health requests approval to contract with His House Foundation for provision of contracted services not to exceed 150,000. As you may know, His House Foundation is a local 501(c)(3) organization that was established in 2008, and they'll be assisting us to improve access and utilization of resources to improve the health and well-being of Carver County residents. And then funding for this contract will be from three funding areas. It'll be from the local public health grant, our public health infrastructure grant, and we'll be using up the tail end of our U Care grant as well. We don't anticipate any use of county levy for supporting this grant activity or this.
For people that don't know, where is His House located?
His, that's a very good question. His House location right now has several different locations, but they're operating for a lot of the services we provide outside of the Moravian Church in Chesapeake, that's where the resource is located. They're also in the process of securing another building that's gonna be used as sort of a one-stop shop for consultation and helping with access with services, and they also have a history of working in the Minnetonka and other areas as well, so yeah.
For those from the other end of the county, I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
His House Foundation serves our community by providing both direct services to families in need, and then they also serve as a catalyst for increased sharing and cooperation and collaboration with the community. That's one of the reasons what we're hoping to use them for. They offer both direct financial and material assistance, food assistance, and also information referrals. They partner with a variety of organizations, public service, nonprofit organization, local churches, and governmental agencies to improve qualities of people's lives. We currently have a separate contract with them to help us with our housing program and our coordinated entry, and they are a state-certified coordinated entry service provider. His House Foundation responds to, again, primarily to the unmet needs of our people in our community and systems in moving forward. Their primary aim is how can we support, walk alongside our residents to enable them to become more self-sufficient and help them access and utilize those services that will then eventually help them thrive. There's a whole host of programs that they are currently providing. I'd be happy to spend, briefly talk more about each one individually if needed, but for the interest of time, I'll just list them, and of course, if you have any questions about any of the particular ones, I'd be happy to share more. As I'd mentioned, they, they provide support for our housing stabilization with our housing unit here in Carver County, as well as the coordinated entry program. They also provide a comprehensive resource center for our residents, so that if they need household items or other issues, they have a chance to get that. They are, they also have the Abundance Food Share Program. That program works to both try to reclaim what would eventually be waste food that would be thrown out, but yet perfectly healthy, perfectly safe, but is reaching sort of the end of the life expectancy of that food, whether it be from a restaurant, even other food shelves or a grocery store, and they partner with our environmental services to reclaim that food while it's still good, fresh, and then make that available to those in our community that are struggling with food security. They're also hoping to expand upon that food. We've been, that food program, well, we'll be working with them to establish a food hub, and the intent of that is to be able to distribute healthy food, and then combine that with some educational opportunities so that we can empower our families to how to buy affordable, sustainable, healthy food meal plans that is also culturally responsive. And so that's also part of the work that we hope to do with this new contract as well. They also are gonna be launching some vocational and employment supportive services, working with our team, working with other organizations and businesses in our community, and they will also help work with us on addressing some of the mental health and mental wellness issues. Specifically, they're gonna try to explore with some innovative strategies with that, both in music and art therapy, as well as providing outreach to help people who are in need of mental health services but are yet not fully equipped to know how to access or follow through on those services. So this would be sort of like a bridging program to help those folks with those services as well. Programs that we're hoping to contract with them for are quite a few, and again, sometimes it seems like it's a little overwhelming, but again, ultimately, many hands make light work, and they will be serving as a fiscal host to work with a host of community organizations, and that's why, that's how we feel we can get a lot more done, and then leverage our work by engaging in the community. The first one here, as I mentioned, is advisory consultation to help us improve access and utilization of services, to support our residents who might be struggling accessing those services. So typically, we'd often refer to them as being marginalized or at risk. We're also, we'd be using His House Foundation to collaborate with our local communities of belonging. I know we had a chance to talk a little bit about that at my presentation in late May when we were talking about our health, health, our health rankings, but we, right now, we have eight communities of belonging out of the 11 townships and municipalities. We hope to have all of our municipalities include that, and His House will also be helping us support those organizations. Food security, like I mentioned, and community engagement on healthy lifestyle. So we're gonna be using them to work with community organizations to host healthy recreational events for kids. Parents usually come along with those kids, that'll provide an opportunity for us to engage the parents on resources and, and healthy choices and a variety of other things. That process will also help build trust with our targeted communities so that they'll be more willing to work with us on accessing, utilizing services that will help promote their health and well-being. Again, as I'd mentioned earlier, we'll be working with them to promote mental health and well-being, educational career services, I alluded to that, and of course, while we're still in the, kind of hopefully, the tail end, at least in the mitigation recovery phase of the COVID-19 pandemic, they will work closely with us to help us engage those communities that have been more disproportionately impacted by COVID, so that we can help them get back on their feet and recover from the pandemic, as well as take strides to prevent their risk for future communicable disease or public health emergencies. One of the things that we have in place, the funding for this, again, we primarily coming from, you know, Minnesota Department of Health Grants, and obviously, with all governmental contracts, we want to have several measures in place for accountability, both fiscal as well as outcome measures. His House Foundation, as I mentioned, is a 501(c)(3), they utilize an external auditor that comes and reviews their books, so they are obligated, all of their folks they work with, they have a service that provides the, the employment coordination, so they make sure they have all the necessary paperwork, legalization, and that makes it easier for us, because we can have the assurance from them to provide that without us necessarily having to do all the overhead, working with all of the different community partners. That's one of the roles that they will play. The action plans, every, both His House and all the groups that they will be working with will be required to fill out an action plan that will specify measurable goals, milestones, objectives. The action plans will list the activities and action steps, and the responsible party, the expected timeline, that all action plans will clarify their budget, intended expenditures. They will also need to identify what they would define as their criteria for success, and how they plan to measure that, and a template of that is provided as one of the exhibits in the actual contract. Some of that will be, you know, work in progress, because as we start working with new community organizations, they would be required, but we do have one that's already been filled out for one of the organizations, Mikasa. It's a four-page document that clearly outlines what they plan to do, and, and then those organizations will be held accountable for that work, and then their reimbursement for that service will be tied to those, those projects. So with that, obviously, I'm here before the board to encourage you to consider a motion to adopt the professional services agreement with His House Foundation for the provision of contracted services not to exceed 150,000. So I'd love to entertain any questions or comments that you may have.
Any questions for Dr. Scott? Seeing that, Mr. Urdeman.
Mr. Chair, we need more Martha Brannans in our community. Like, she's got a heart of gold, and she does a lot of things, and, and the county supported her for a number of years in her efforts. There's a lot of great not-for-profits in this area, and sometimes you gotta get in the business of picking and choosing who you work with and who you don't, and I know that you've got a lens on equity. My two questions, I think you answered most of them, is the MDH is where the dollars is, so these are non-levy dollars. Martha and her team are the fiscal host. My two questions, I guess, would be, is the impact and the outcomes, which you talked about, how many miles are served, how many people are we moving from, from a place of need to a non-place of need, and does this scale? Anytime I look at a small not-for-profit, I've been involved with a lot of them, is, we know Martha, there's 82 things that she does, but does this scale within our county? And so those are questions to be steward of these dollars, and I think you answered most of those.
Thank you, Commissioner and Chair. If I could elaborate on that a little bit. I know I have asked Martha again, and she does provide regular statistical information for our housing contract with her, and we have that, obviously, but just, just kind of the resource centers, they serve about 4,000 people a year through their resource center. Their abundance food share program redistributes 20,000 pounds of food per month, so that's food that's taken out of the waste stream. That's, that's sometimes additional food needs to be purchased, though, in order to provide food for our residents. And their contract with, they've entered into a partnership with Mikasa in some January this year already, and that has allowed them to service another 200 households every week. That they were having a hard time, primarily Latino community, but others as well, that they just weren't feeling connected, but working with Mikasa, who were representing people from the community that they were serving, allowed that connection, and so obviously, being able to serve those additional 200 a week, so we're excited about that. But what I'm really excited about, I think what Commissioner Urdeman is referring to, is that the primary funding source from this is coming from our Public Health Infrastructure Grant, which the board approved on May 24th, and that is really for us to rethink, how do we provide services and our core public health functions in the community? How can we leverage the community itself more effectively so that they can take greater ownership and responsibility in taking steps for their own health and well-being, and that sense of sharing or coordination among our community resources? So Martha, obviously, is a gem, she's a champion. I was just sharing with one of the members in the audience during our recess, while you guys were in closed session, is that one of my mentors early in my life said, "Richard, when you have a new project, you often need a champion." You know, and so you, and, and so he referred to that as the personality cult. The success of that program is based on the qualities and the personality of that person. But it'll be never sustainable if you don't find a way to transfer it into a bureaucratic cult. I know that term sounds bad, but basically, what he was saying, you have to have a way to systematize it, you have to have a way to bring it up to scale, otherwise, those services disappear when the champion disappears. And so the, one of the main purposes of the Public Health Infrastructure Grant is to do just that. How can we be creative, innovative, cost-effective, to learn how to build those partnerships, so that when Martha might choose to move to California, like others we know have, we will have somebody to fill her place?
Not to mention it in this.
And be able to continue the great work that she's been a part of. And I think the real joy, though, of this is that we provide a way for people to feel involved, they feel like they can contribute, and for my, my entire career, I think the time, the, the principle that affects people the most is when they can feel that they are contributing to something worthwhile, that gives them a sense that they really matter, and that they can be a part of the solution in their community, and that's what this is hoped to do.
I'd move approval with the ask of having an impact statement annually, to see where we're moving on it with regard to scale and otherwise, so.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Urdeman, second by Commissioner Workman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Scott. We have two agenda items, 9.2 and 9.3, that are settlement agreements for right-ofways. We'll call up Patrick Lambert, our senior right-ofway agent. Mr. Lambert, anything special about these? Take one at a time, but.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. No, there's nothing special about any of these. They're pretty much appraised value plus typically, we use as the, we're required to pay for an appraisal if they want to get one, if they don't, we just give them the money for it. So that's what the, that's why these are being approved settlements, rather than the original offer amounts, because that's just a little additional money.
Any questions for Mr. Lambert? Seeing none, is there a motion? On the first one, the motion to approve the resolution authorizing the settlement of compensation for acquisition of real property interest needed for County Road 20 and Minnesota Highway 25 intersection project. So moved. Motion by Commissioner Fahy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdeman. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Commissioner Lynch.
This is, project is needed worse than anything, but I will have to abstain because I have a conflict, one is my brother-in-law.
That's probably the reason we're seeing it today, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and one abstention. So it passes 4-0 with one abstention. That's the first one. The second one is a settlement agreement. Mr. Lambert, anything different about this one?
No, this one is actually the last settlement on this project, and it represents the appraised value plus Fagland, so there's an appraisal fee that they wanted, and some minimal amount of crop loss.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lambert? If not, the motion is to adopt the resolution authorizing the settlement of compensation for acquisition of real property needed for the Highway 24 project. Is there such a motion? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Workman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urdeman. Any discussion?
Only that, I'd like to thank all my fellow Commissioners for getting to settlements with, and I have abstained, and I know all these people, and they're all good friends.
Any other discussion? If all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously with one abstention. Thank you very much, and with that, it brings us to the end of our meeting, except, or am I missing something?
My reports, Mr. Chair.
Huh?
Administrator.
Oh, administrative reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Board members.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
One quick one. Commissioner Urdeman asked about adding an item to the agenda for committee reports. Way back when, many years ago, the board used to do that, they discontinued it, I think, mainly because it got a little lengthy. You know, technically, that would take an amendment to your board operating rules, although if you, if you want to do it, we'll add it. But, Mr. Urdeman, Commissioner Urdeman, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just, I'd asked, I didn't have any history behind it, so it's helpful to know that it was once here and it's not, but you go to, I mean, I look at JP, because he's probably got the longest list of things, or myself, and at random, I share updates to the library, updates to the Greater MSP, updates to Arts Committee, et cetera. We're doing these things regularly, and it's a lot of time, you spend a lot of miles, I keep looking how many townships you and Timbo have. So I think it's helpful to know, it doesn't need to be formalized, but I'll probably be bringing a few more updates forward from the committees that I sit on.
No, I think that's the thing, that it just got to be the time-constrained issue that at one point, that it kind of fell by the wayside. But it is good to keep informed, let other Commissioners know what's going on at the committee meetings. Most of the time, people see us at our meeting here, they never see us at the meetings that we, that's most of our, the work is done at other meetings, other places.
Mr. Chair, I won't formalize that on the agenda. And then the second item is board re-creation, that's next, or June 21, is that next week? Yeah. Sounds like we have only a handful, of course, people can walk in, but pretty amazing, given the valuation increases. So the packet, I think, is, has that gone out yet?
On Thursday.
Packet's coming out Thursday, so.
Kudos to our assessor and the staff. And I encourage anybody, if you have any questions with your appraisals or anything, talk to the staff. That's step number one. Anything else?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that, it comes to the end of our, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Fahy to adjourn. That motion is non-debatable. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned. With that, we'll go right into our work.